Welcome to tonight's meeting. Mr. Fenders, if you want to take us out of the practice session. As a reminder for all the board members, your microphones are turned off. When you do need to speak, please turn them on, or you can push them out. That helps a lot with e-sound and you can get up through the camera and for those that are participating through Zoom online. Wait just one moment. Mr. Fenders, when you see a few people logging in, please just let me know. Okay, thank you, everyone. As this is our reorganization meeting, I will start the meeting until we have our election of our officers. Please note, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that can attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 819-6466-0201 and the required password is 374152. Roll call, we are going to skip for now until after we have a square member or new members. We'll have a roll call afterwards. Presenting announcement. Adequate notice of this agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 5th, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. If everyone will please rise for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Announcement of the results of the election. This is for the election that was held November 2nd, 2021. The top three candidates that were elected to the board by residents of the township. Mr. Benjamin Kismarski receiving 3,025 votes. Tricia Devenero, 3,015 votes. Michael Gallo, 2,798 votes. At this time, I will administer the oath of office to Mr. Kismarski and Mr. Gallo. Ms. Devenero cannot be with us this evening. She will be sworn in at a later date.
Are you going to administer or are you just going to read it?
Um, no, you can just read it. You have a copy now?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kismarski. This will begin when you're ready.
All right. I, Benjamin Kismarski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Benjamin Kismarski, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of crime or offense listed in NJS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kismarski, and congratulations. Mr. Gallo, whenever you are ready.
I, Michael Gallo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Michael Gallo, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, and congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll take a roll call of the 2022 Mawa Board of Education. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
And Ms. Saco.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I will accept nominations from members of the board for the officer position of president for the 2022 school year, 2022 calendar year. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Wicker, I'd like to nominate Dr. Morthe as president.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to second the nomination for Dr. Morthe.
Thank you, Ms. Saco. For the officer nominations, a second is not required, but thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other nominations, I'll take a roll call vote for Dr. Morthe to be president for the 2022 calendar year. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
And Ms. Saco.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Morthe. If you will, we'll take a minute. We'll switch seats and we'll go on to the officer position of vice president elections.
Okay.
Did you name? Take a name, please, for you.
Did I take my name? Did I bring this?
Oh, yes.
Dr. Morthe, whenever you're ready. Please ask members of the board for nominations for the position of first vice president.
All right. Thank you very much. Do I have nominations for position of first vice president? Mr. Kismarski?
I would like to nominate Rick De Silva.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. And roll call.
Okay, for Mr. De Silva as first vice president for the 2022 year. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. De Silva.
Now, we'll take nominations for second vice president.
Dr. Morthe, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kismarski as second vice president.
Thank you very much. And we take a vote.
Okay, for Mr. Kismarski as second vice president for the 2022 calendar year. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Congratulations.
We move on to readaption of existing bylaws, policies, and regulations. Do I need to read that, Mr. Wicker?
You do not, but you do not need to read that, Dr. Morthe, but for this, we will need a motion and a second.
Okay. Do I have a motion to readapt our existing bylaws, policies, and regulations? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva.
Okay, roll call for readaption of existing bylaws, policies, and regulations. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. I need now a motion for naming of official newspapers. Do I have a motion for naming of official newspapers? Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Mr. Denise.
Okay, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. We move on to appointments. First, I need a motion on school business administrator and board secretary. Oh, sorry.
Do we care to do these individually or as one block?
Oh, as one block. Excellent.
So this would be for...
Voting on from 1 to, let's see, wait a few here, 217, starting with school business administrator, ending with ADA coordinator. Motion, Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Kismarski.
Okay, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Next, we move on to approvals. Can I take that 1 through 4?
Just Dr. Morthe, if I could just make a recommendation. Then we take 1 through 3 and then take 4 separately.
I was thinking that as well. Thank you. So approvals, 1 through 3. Do I have a motion? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland.
Okay, roll call on approvals 1 through 3. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. Now, let's do number 4, Board Member Code of Ethics. Would we like to read that, board members? Or we will just have a motion and a second? A motion to approve our Board Member Code of Ethics. Mr. Denise, second, Mr. De Silva.
Okay, roll call for Board Member Code of Ethics, number 4, under approvals. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. And now I need a motion to adjourn our reorganization meeting. Mr. Kismarski, moved and seconded by Mr. De Silva. Thank you, everyone. We take a momentary break or we can break into our next public work session.
Unless there's anybody that isn't...
On Zoom?
Yeah, we have one continued Zoom for both of you.
Okay, great. So we now move into our public work session action meeting. Please note, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID remains the same, 819-6466-0201, and the required password is 374152. Call to order, please.
Roll call for the public work session action meeting. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Here. Adequate notice of the agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 5th, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. De Silva, would you lead us in that?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, face the flag, coronation. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will we be having executive session at the end, gentlemen?
Yes, correct. We can, no need to have number 5 of the executive session at this time.
Okay. So, I move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than 1 and your remarks to no longer than 3 minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. Okay, we are open. I don't see anyone moving forward to the mic, so motion to close meeting to the public. Mr. Kismarski, second by Ms. Saco. Superintendent's report, Dr. Dittora.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to the new positions.
Thank you very much.
To start the superintendent's report, we have Dr. Ravino, Mr. Agliata, and Ms. Kalbaki, who are going to be sharing with the commute with the board the Start Strong assessment presentation.
That's it, I'm out.
Well, good evening, everybody. Congratulations to our new president and congratulations to the reorganization process. It was interesting to watch. She's never seen it before. So it was very nice. We'll wait for our president.
We're very excited.
Very excited.
Very excited about this presentation. Looking forward.
Signs coming down.
Yeah, crazy. Crazy at first.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to be presenting the information that was put out by the state for the Start Strong assessment. I want to highlight the words on the right of the screen. Support in identifying student needs. So this assessment is like no other assessment that ever has happened in our district before. It really was used to highlight some subskills in some content areas to see what our kids might need at the start of the school year, okay? So, there's some things here that we want to highlight. It gave educators insight into what skills students may need support in. This wasn't saying, this is where they are, this is our achievement. It's saying, this is where our kids are coming in, and this is information that you can couple with your assessments to say, what can we do for these kids, right? What can we do for our students? If you look down, there's usually a state assessment called the NJSLA. The NJSLA is usually given in the spring. It was not given last year with remote instruction and hybrid. But this Start Strong replaced that. What the state has told us to remind everybody is that it was not a predictor of student performance, this assessment, so we can't use it like that. We have to use it in a different way. It was given in the first month of school, so in September. It was 3 weeks in, we were giving a state assessment to our students, which was a little different than normal. It was quick, it was in person. It was limited amount of numbers of questions. But what it did allow us to do is say, what else do we have in our assessment bank? And how can we couple it together? The results did mirror what we already knew about our kids coming in, which was a testament to our teachers. I'm going to speak a little bit to the test design itself. As Dr. Ravino mentioned, this is unlike any assessment we've given before in the sense that it was a quick snapshot of what our students can do in a very narrow subset of standards that we teach. So there were 3 components to the, there were 3 types of assessments students took. They took an ELI, a math, and a science test. The math and ELI questions came from items that were previously released from an item back, from an item bank of former tests that were given. On the ELI test itself, there were only 10 questions. All 10 of those questions were multiple parts, 2 parts, and it really zoomed in on reading standards only, and it was less than 50% of the reading standards that we teach into in a given year. In our math assessment, there were between 15 and 25 questions asked of the students. Those were a mix of student responses, whether it was multiple choice, choose all of the correct answers. And again, that was a very narrow scope of the standards we teach in math. It focused in on 30% of the math standards, give or take, that we teach in a given year. The science assessment was unique. Science has not had as much testing in previous years as math and ELI has, so the items that were tested by the students, like the students had responded to, were not field tested as frequently, and that is to be made note of. There were approximately 25 questions on the science assessment. That was only given in 3 grade levels, 6th, 9th, and 11th. It's really important, and we put this, we highlighted this in yellow. This is direct quote from the state. This test was designed for a quick snapshot and immediate results that we could have so we can zoom in on student proficiencies. It does not cover everything we teach, and it does not support the same comparisons and inferences that we should make about student proficiency. So normally, in a district testing presentation, we walk away knowing where our students are. This presentation, we're going to walk away knowing what our students came in with so that we could teach into some of the prerequisite skills that they were going to need.
So this slide's important because it really gives you a good snapshot of how to test a setup. So if we're looking at the English language arts, you're looking at the English language arts, the math, and the science in the first column, and you've got the grade course in 2021, 22, and then what they're assessed. So if you look at the top, you see that the 4th graders were tested on grade 3 material. 5th graders were tested on grade 4. So everyone was a level below. So you look at the Algebra 1 and Geometry and Mathematics. Algebra and Geometry at the high school is predominantly 9th graders, but they're testing on the 8th grade material. So this was really used as a benchmark and a foundation to see when students came from that non-traditional setting over the last 2 years, back into the traditional setting of this year, where they were, and then where do we need to take them. So what teachers are utilizing or doing with this material, with this information, and this is what we do here at Mawa anyway, is specifically for like, for talking about math, it didn't cover all the specific topics. It only touched on a few general topics. So before teachers would introduce new material, the grade level material, they would pre-assess students before, see where they are. And then when they introduced the new material, they'd be able to fill in the gaps. So we use this as a great tool to really highlight some of the flat, some of the concerns the students had that we got from the information from the Start Strong assessment.
So this slide shows you how many students sat for the assessment at each grade level in each subject. So you have ELI, math, and science going across, and then down, the columns going down, you'll see the grade level or the sub-test, right? So when you see Algebra 1, that indicates different groups of students, not necessarily in grade 8, or grade 9, or grade 10, because our Algebra 1 test actually tested kids that were in grade 7 all the way through grade 10, depending on where they were in our math track. But if you look, this slide really shows you that almost 100% of our students sat for every test that they needed to sit for, which was, which was great, especially in the beginning of the year, especially with all that was happening in the beginning of the year coming back. This is something to highlight, that we were able to get a really, a great understanding about all of our students. I do want to point out before we go on, and Dominic and Jen will talk about this when they get to the math slide. If you look at where Math 7 starts, the numbers start to kind of not match where ELI is. Do you see that? So 203 and 191, and then 238, 141. That's because that's the age where our math tracks start to splinter. So our kids can choose different programs and go into different classes based off where their proficiencies are and what their interest is in. So the numbers are not indicating now the grade level. So in grade 8, we have 238 students that sat for ELI, but 144 of those sat for the math test because the other students were in either an Algebra 1 test, a Geometry test, Algebra 2 test. Does that make sense? So this is our first data slide. On this slide, you will see this...
Chart.
It's our first chart. It's our first, but you're right. We just showed a bunch of numbers. Anyway, this is our first chart that is showing the outcomes from the assessment. So what I really want us to pay attention to on here is the way our students came in this year. This is showing us what prerequisite skills they were prepared for in their current grade level. So the dark purple that you see at the top, that is showing where students less support may be needed. The middle, lighter purple, that is showing where some support may be needed for students. And then at the bottom, it's showing that some strong support may be needed for students. Later in the presentation, we're going to show you a sample of a student score report. That's where we will be able to zoom in and show you exactly what type of support was needed for a child. So this is just district at a glance. You can see that many of our students, most of our students, did come into the current grade level that they're in with preparedness of the prerequisite skills.
The English Latin is the English Language Arts assessment, part of the assessment. The one thing I want you to really pay attention to is you'll be in grade levels on the left, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. And then the dark purple, as Jen just said, the less support may need. So if you're looking down the numbers, those percentages going down, starting from 4th grade, you see 36%, 57%, 45%. And then once you get to 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, you see 56%, 59%, 62%, and 67%. So as students are progressing, and as those students who spend more time within the structure of how we work in Mawa, you see that they need less and less support as going through, coming in, those 10th graders. They did very well. They had more traditional instruction. They were basically, for lack of a better term, indoctrinated into the Mawa way of how we do things, and you see how those numbers fall. When we always do the, when I always do the presentation for, when Jen and I did the presentation this year for the SATP scores and AP scores, one thing I always kind of highlight and talk about is that as we see the data trend in all the different test scores, NJSLA, and AP, 3rd and 4th grade, 5th grade, you see the numbers go up and down. But then when we get to the last slide, when we talk about AP scores, when we talk about SAT scores, we see our numbers are absolutely comparable across the board to the state and national levels. So our students get through and go through the Mawa system, built on the foundation, starting with our teachers down in the elementary schools. And once they finish, you know, our students get to the point where they're ready to go out into the real world, and they're very successful. So you see how these numbers kind of dictate and show how our students who have been in a traditional setting, how they perform.
Here, we're going to be zooming in on our math performance across the grade levels. When you're looking at the left side of the screen, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, those are showing you the students' prerequisite skills of the grade right before. But again, as Dr. Ravino had mentioned prior, on the slide showing the numbers of students who sat, in 8th grade is where you will start to see students based on... based on their prerequisite skill mastery, already going into that grade level, going into higher level courses of Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry I. So Algebra I, for example, up here on this, on this screen, is showing you students that are seventh graders all the way through 10th graders, and how they performed on this assessment. All of this information here is showing you in general the grade level performance. But our teachers are really, really zooming in on what are the specific standards that our students need to support. So a specific example for fourth grade would be, we noticed, as I said previously, only 30% of the standards were assessed. In fourth grade, the standards that were assessed were in measurement and data, and fractions, numbers and operations, and cell on. Fractions was that area where the support was needed. And so when we look back and think back on the last year and a half, there was not as much foundational experiences for kids in terms of touching and holding and creating fractional parts of items. So we know as a fourth grade educational system that we're going to infuse additional lessons for our kids in terms of getting that concrete experience about fractions before we expect them as fourth graders to have that abstract idea. So I just wanted to highlight that for you.
Here's the science assessment. Again, it was all tested in grade six, nine, and 12. Sixth grade and ninth, sixth graders and ninth graders were tested on two years' worth of science instruction. And the seniors were tested on, the seniors had more experience going through the Mawa system and going through the high school and having them hands-on, really specific lab experiences that really highlight that those students did really well and needed less support.
The state requires us to provide you with aggregated data and disaggregated data. So this is the part of the presentation that's going to be there, disaggregated data. This slide is showing you female to male comparisons. If you look across in all areas, we pretty much trend together, okay? Female, male comparisons. In ELA, they're very, very similar, you know, a couple of percentage points away from each other. When you go to math and science, you do see a slight, a slight increase in need to support females than males. But again, it is very slight. We're talking about a few percentage points as well.
On this slide, we are reporting on the ethnicity performance of the students in different ethnic categories in our district. It's really important that when you are looking at these bars, understanding that the numbers are not the same. So here in Mawa, pre-K through 12, about 65% of our students are white, about 17% of our students are Asian, about 3% of our students are Black, African-American, about 8% of our students are Hispanic or Latino, and about 6% report as being two or more races. So these are not, you can't compare across to say that these numbers are equivalent in any sort of way. But what you can do is, what our teachers are doing is looking at, what are the specific skills, when I zoom in for my students, that they are prepared for in this current grade level? And what are the skills that they need?
On this slide, it shows you a different vantage point. So you have our IEP students, you have 504 students. And normally, we would also be showing you our ELL population. We can't show you our ELL population right now because we had to have at least 10 students take and sit for a test in order to give you the information on that and report out on information. So we're going to show you the IEP information and the 504 student information. If you look at the IEP information, reminding ourselves that this is prerequisite skills. We keep using that word, right? I almost want a different word to say to you right now. Just the skills knowing going into that grade level that a child would need to have. We know that our IEP students are students that have individual education plans for a reason, they need individual goals set for them. So we already know that these students may not have the ability at that grade level to have that prerequisite skill knowledge right on intake in the week of, three weeks into school. But our teachers do a really nice job at looking at their IEPs, dissecting what they need in terms of their individual goals, and using, we can certainly use a Start Strong assessment information as well as our information that we have in our assessments to say, what exactly do we need to do to bring our students where they need to be? Our 504 students are pretty much trending actually above where the other general education bars were. So this kind of speaks to where they are as well. So every parent tomorrow is going to get an individual student report. So tomorrow morning, we won't actually get it tomorrow morning, but they will be mailed tomorrow morning. And then we're hoping you will get it before the weekend, possibly after. But we wanted to show you snippets of what that report will look like so that when you receive it, you'll know how to interpret it. So this is a snapshot of the top of the report. So obviously, it would have your child's name at the top, and it would have your child's information. And then you're going to see a bar like this. So if you look at this bar, it's showing you that this student, in this particular area, is given a number of 17. So you're kind of thinking to yourself, what does that mean? 17, that is how many, right? So 17 out of 24. It doesn't mean there was 24 questions. It actually means that there was 24 pieces of information analyzed. So a question could be two, count as two points. Because there might be two areas in a question that count. So some of the, some of the tests are straightforward. There's 24 questions, 24 points. Some of them might have 18, but multiple points within one question. Does that make sense? Okay. So this child's showing a 17. You might have children that show a level one, you might have children that show a level two. What this means to us is that we have to look at the reports and say, what areas are they missing the questions in, right? And Jen's going to talk to you a little bit about dissecting that 17, and how a teacher can dissect that 17 and say, okay, we don't have to focus on geometry, they were fine on those questions, but fractions were not so great, right? So we need to build in lessons with that student so that we're able to give them that foundation before we go into fraction unit.
So the next part of the score report will dive right into the different domains of the subject that you are looking at.
So this is really hard to see, hold on. So this is actually correlated to the 17. So if you look on the right, you'll see, I think it says six, right? So out of six points, this child got five points or questions out of six possible points or questions. And then going down, six again, six again, six again. And well, that equals now 17. But it was out of 24, okay.
So one left.
Yes. So that tells me right on the, on the end of that chart, it was the 24, so it brings you to 24. The boxes that are shaded in are the amount of points per section. Makes sense?
The thing that I want to highlight here is, so these are the four domains for math. This is a, this is a fourth grade example. So these are the four domains for math at the fourth grade level. When we look at numbers and operations, fractions, for example, there were only one standard or two standards assessed out of approximately eight standards that we teach into in third grade. So the state really zoomed in on two specific standards, asked five questions, one of which was two parts, and then came up with this score to say, hey, teacher, here's another data point that you can use to know that your student, he had what he needed when he came in, or she, she had what she needed when she, when she came in in this area. And what our teachers are doing is zooming in even further with our benchmarks and our tests to assess and reassess, did I hit the mark on this area? Because the Start Strong assessment told me that it might be an area of concern, or can I move on and move forward with our grade level content? So the next two slides are really going to zoom in on the intervention strategies that we have in place here in Mawa to meet the needs of all of our students, whether they fell into the more support needed category or the less support needed category. Because we know all kids at all times of the year need support in some way. So we included K through three on here because, as you know, the fourth graders were assessed on third grade standards. So as K-3 principals, we are looking at that information to think into and talk about, what can we do to boost up our current third graders as they move on into fourth grade? What you'll see that's common in both K through three and Joyce Kilmer is that we have something, for example, like NJSLA free tutoring for students who need support, whether Jen, ELL, or in our special education programs. Something else that we have is, you know, one-to-one conferring in our workshop model. We do small group instruction strategy groups. We have a lot of online programs such as iExcel and Raz Kids that not only give additional practice and opportunities for students to learn, but also give us more data and feedback that teachers can use to know if we're hitting the mark, or we need to add in some more supports for our students. One of the things that you see up here and you'll see throughout is this idea of an accelerated learning plan. We have been doing accelerated learning planning for the last year and a half, for the last two years, so that we know we are meeting our kids on the mark with what they need in the current grade level. So here are just some examples of interventions we're doing at the K-5 level.
These are the interventions that we use at the Ridge and at the high school. And the thing I want you to really truly understand, and Jen touched on it also, is when we received the results and we started analyzing the data for the Start Strong, we knew we had to come up with solutions or interventions for students who, in the non-traditional setting, lost a little, needed a little more support. So when we use, when we pull these intervention strategies and we utilize it, this is stuff we already had in place. We weren't reinventing the wheel, we weren't panicking, we weren't pressing the panic button, saying, what are we going to do for these kids? We just took the practices and the sound educational strategy we've always had, and we put them here, when you utilize first students. We've had CCR classes at the high school, the college and career readiness classes for English and math, for years, for those students who were struggling. This year, we have a few more students, we built a few more sections for those students in English and math. Same thing at the Ridge. So we were using this data, we knew this data coming into it. So these students that we had already identified last year, before we even got the results of this test, we're already placing them in these classes. So this, the data that we got from the Start Strong assessment just basically reinforced what we already knew. But we have all these strategies in place, and we've been utilizing them for years. And that's why when we talk about our students who have, students always struggle. Even at the high school level, when we talk about the way our classes are set up, we have AP, we're talking for English, AP English, honors English, and then CPE English, right? And we have students who are in the AP class who are, who really succeed very well. We have students who are in that cusp of AP and honors, in the honors class. We have students who are almost at AP. And then we have students at the other level who are just really kind of want to push themselves. And they're at the CPE and getting that honors, in that honors curriculum. The teachers are diversifying, and the teachers are utilizing strategies across the board at all levels. So these intervention strategies are something that are tried and true, and our teachers, they just run with them. They really, they know how to utilize them, they know how to reach students, and they know how to identify those students and which strategies they need.
And I think something to highlight here is that, you know, at the onset of this year, teachers knew, educators knew, we had to work with our students and have a different lens when we invited them back to the classroom, right? So all of these interventions are in place. But the thing that we really focus on is the individual student. What does the individual student mean, right? What can we do in the classrooms to differentiate all the way from pre-K all the way up to 12, depending on where they are and where they were falling with our assessments? And of course, the Start Strong. We did want to take this opportunity to thank our teachers and our administrators, our supervisors. Everyone did a lot of work when we got this information in early December to disaggregate it, look at it, understand it, see if we were really helping the students and matching it to what we had. One of the questions that Miguel had for me was, did you already know, or were we getting this in December saying, oh, no, we didn't catch that, right? We are not in that place of we didn't know, which is wonderful, right? And that's a testament to our teachers for really having a keen eye on what our kids need when they walk in, and being able to advocate for that, for that need. And build in time to, as Jen was talking about, accelerated learning. That's building in time to deepen the level of instruction that's happening on a concept. So thank you very much for, for hearing us out tonight. And if you have any questions, over here.
Sure.
Dr. Mortheke.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vivino, Mrs. Klavaki, and Mr. Bliata, for your very thorough presentation. Just a little compliment to all of you because a few of us in instruction and curriculum did actually receive this presentation this morning. And I think some feedback was given, and I'm very glad to see that it was adopted beautifully. And some of the things you added into the presentation for this evening, I feel really gave it more depth and clarity. So thank you very much for that. Now, do we have questions from board members? I think Mr. Kizmarsky, and I see you there, Dr. Park. So you'll be next.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this presentation. This is wonderful. I could, just a quick comment, I definitely want to thank our teachers for being all over this. I could speak from experience that they knew from day two where my fourth grader was and started addressing it immediately. So, but my question is, we talked a lot this summer at our board retreat about data and analyzing data. And this is a snapshot of the third week of school back from a year of, a year and a half of. Are they planning on doing this again next September to see if we're, I guess, caught up, for lack of a better word, or if it all worked?
That's a great question. So it's funny, if you asked me a year ago, I would have said the state was trying to move away from state-centeredized assessments and computerized assessments, go to portfolios. I think it really, they're bringing back the NJSLA, so I don't know that they would institute this again. However, we don't know, right? They have not, they have not put that information out to us, whether this will be a yearly thing in September or whether it was, you know, right for right now kind of moment. Dr. Park, go ahead.
Thank you again, that was a really detailed and terrific presentation. Some of the data that really jumped out to me was in race and ethnicity. And it does seem like there are certain student populations, particularly Black and Hispanic students, who need a significant amount more support. So I'm wondering, now that we have that data, what are the next steps in terms of, A, identifying the causes, right, of that, of those statistics? And then, B, figuring out how is it specifically that we support these student populations? I think you mentioned a number of supports that are, you know, given to individual students, right? But once we have also identified groups of students that need specific support, right? Maybe it might be based on race, ethnicity, gender. You know, what kinds of things may be done to support those specific groups of students who are struggling?
That's a great question as well. So because we just got this information, what we're able to do is, obviously, it's a large snapshot, right? So we have to distill down within those groups. So when you're talking about our Black, African-American slide, right? That, that bar that went across, that's 3% of our students. It's about 88 for the whole district, it's less from the students that were tested. So we have to look at those about 60 students and say, where are they? What grade levels are they in? What concepts were difficult? Is it, is it streamlined throughout, right? Is the concept constant from fourth grade all the way up? And that's the work we're literally going to launch into. We do have current programs in place in terms of like free tutoring and different after-school programs, things like that, that help with all students. But we also, we were actually talking about this. For Hispanic-Latino line, if you saw in math and science, that was another area that we want to focus on. We really want to say too, what we couldn't, what we couldn't show today was our ELL population. Where do those students fit, right, in those categories? Do they cross categories? Do we have cross-sections going into other aggregated areas? So we're about to launch into that.
Can I just add to that? And I think the question is a very valid question, and I think it's a really complex answer. I think the first thing we need to do, which we're currently doing, is to pull out the students who are struggling and really start to create or focus in on what are their educational plans. So that could look like just having conversation about students in need, which schools across the district are having. That can also look like an I N R S meeting that a number of students are taking part in. And throughout those meetings, that's when you can really get to the heart of, why are they performing at that level? What are their specific needs? And what is the instructional plan for that student? And that really crosses across any race or gender. I do think that we do need to have a focused eye on what are the trends specific to, is there something specific across a specific race band or a specific gender band? And those are the conversations that we're going to continue to try to look into as those meetings are happening for all of our students that are in need, that need those foundational skills or prerequisite skills to build their proficiency. Because we need to bring everybody along, and we want to continue to look to close the gaps.
It stood out to us, too. We were well aware.
It was circled.
Circled highlighted.
Um, thank, are there any other questions? Really, Mr. Gallo?
I forgot one of my questions from this morning.
Oh, oh, excellent, okay, very good.
So, I'm a parent, I received that report hopefully by snail mail sometime in the next few days, and I'm assuming there's a cover letter that goes with it, and my student is identified as needing some amount of support. So I have questions about that, and I'm assuming in the cover letter I'll say, "Here's where you direct your questions to, here's how we can partner with you." You know, I'm thinking Parent Academy as a, as a forum to distill that a little bit. But the fact that Ben was asking the question, or reporting his experience with the fourth grader, he's already seen that we're on the ground supporting those students, and that this is probably not going to be a surprise to some parents. It'll be like, "Oh, thank, you know, I realized Johnny was in a bad spot," or "Johnny was doing really well," and they're helping him out. So, and a follow-up to sort of Ben's question about the test, how will we know, like, at the end of the school year, if our interventions move the needle? You know, like, other than NJSLA, which will take forever to get the results, you know, how will we know? Because we also have an arsenal of internal assessments, but we don't really report on that at a system-wide level, right? They're sort of like buried down at the individual's class level, or grade level, or school level. So I'm just wondering, like, how will we know if we bent the needle?
I think more than ever, and I think Dr. Dittoro was even highlighting it even more so, is that we're focusing on the individual student, right? So you're the parent, you're looking at your child's data, the first line of defense, the first person you should call is your teacher, because they're the one that's working with your child in that math class every day, and they're going to be able to say, "Yes, and," and this is what we're doing, right? When we think about the progress that our kids are going to make, again, go back to individual child, you as the parent will see that individualized data for your child to know, "Okay, you told me as a fourth grader, they came in, they were struggling in fractions. How are they doing? We just finished the fraction unit, how did they do?"
Right.
And is that transferring two weeks from now, where after the assessment's gone, and now we're on to geometry?
Right.
So it's really, I think if we continue to harness and focus in on our individuals, and partner with our teachers and our parents together, that's how we'll know that we're making the mark.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Koen?
Yes. So, Dr. Bavino, you said earlier that the ELL population visit represented because we didn't have 10 students to test?
We didn't have enough at each level to show you the information.
And it had to be 10 at each level?
Yes.
And then my other question is that, how did the state determine what standards to zoom in on? Were they the more broad standards?
They closed their eyes and then, no. I'll choose this one. They, in all seriousness, they, they look at their standard bands and they say, "What are, what are the major areas that we know honestly that kids consistently have trouble with?" So when they're testing fractions, they're testing it intentionally. Fractions always are a difficult spot for kids, and we tend to actually teach it at the end of the year, which is very funny, right? Because we teach it right before these major tests are coming on. But yes, they chose to be a sub, what they felt were the prerequisite skills for the child to be successful in the next category, in the next year, in the next class, and they hone down on those specific targeted skills.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm sure, any additional questions, you can certainly email Dr. Bavino if things come to mind. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Dittoro, was that your full report, or do you still require?
Thanks for the lights.
Earlier, geez, earlier today, everyone received an email from me specific to this morning, and I felt like I needed to give a little bit of context to the community, to the board. It was an extremely difficult situation. As everyone knows, and as we have detailed in the past, the way in which we call specific inclement weather days is something that is comprehensive, it's something that we track throughout the week, we speak to a number of different entities, and we do our very best to make the right call. As we were tracking it last night into this morning, it was following what we saw, it started snowing around six o'clock, but at seven o'clock is when it made a turn for the worse. The rain made it significantly difficult for our teachers, and our students, and our parents to get to school. When we got more information, we made the very difficult determination that we were going to do with the late opening for our elementary students. I do want our secondary team to understand that at no point do we value our elementary team more than our secondary team. It was the timing of the storm, and we are truly sorry for the inopportune time that this decision was made, and the difficulty and inconvenience that it had on our teachers, our students, and our parents. Please note that moving forward, as we have in the past, we are going to do our very best to monitor as many different sources as we can to make a situation on a very unpredictable entity, and we will continue to do our very best to make the right choice. So, again, we are sorry for the difficult situation that took place this morning. Please know that our intentions were in the right place, and the timing just didn't work out, so we apologize for that.
Thank you, Dr. Dittoro. Our business administrator and board secretary, Mr. Bleecker, your report?
Okay, yes, thank you very much. First, happy new year to everybody, and congratulations to our officers for the 2022 year. A bullet point on the agenda speaks to board committees. You'll see on the agenda that we, the board committee reports, we do not have on this evening, board committees for the 2022 year will be established by Dr. Morthee. For members of the board, you will be receiving a survey from me the next day or two, asking for your interest of which board committees you would like to participate on, or potentially chair. That survey will be given to Dr. Morthee for selection, and appointments will be made within the coming weeks. Once those appointments are made, committees will be meeting. It does not require an approval vote by the board, just an appointment by the board president. For that, and speaking specifically about finance and facilities committee, more so the finance side of things, I'm happy to report to the board that our audit, the final pieces of it, were presented and shared with me just prior to the winter break. Now that we have that, and once we have a committee established, I will schedule a meeting, hopefully prior to our January 26 meeting, with the finance committee, and with our auditor, and their team from Ms. Zbachi, just to discuss the findings and results of our financials from the 2021 school year. One area I am happy to report on, that there were no audit recommendations for this year. And for that, I thank very much the team in the business office, the team in schools, and team in central office, everyone who assisted with participating in providing information to the auditors for this year. Again, we'll have more information when we present that report to the finance committee, and when we have a formal board resolution to accept the audit from the 2021 school year. Also, speaking, one more item about finance, as budget preparation, we're just closing the 2021 school year, we're doing all work for the 2022, 2023 school year right now, preparing our budget for that school year. I shared earlier in the year, the calendar that was released as far as when reported dates for the budget. Now that we have also established our board meetings for the year, I can give some more exact dates. So for the board's information, and for the public as well, our preliminary budget has a due date to the county office of March 21st. Looking at when our board meeting calendar is, we anticipate our March 9th board meeting is when we have our first presentation of the 2022, 23 budget, and shortly thereafter submitted to the county for preliminary review. After that review is returned, the final budget for next school year is required by the state timelines to be completed by May 9th. Looking at our board meeting calendar, our May 4th meeting is when we'll have our final adoption of the budget for the 22, 23 year. Again, that's our timelines based on where our meeting schedule is now, if you need to make any adjustments, we shall. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yes.
If you have any questions?
So at our, sorry, at our board retreat, we had discussed the possibility of possibly either changing some board committees, or incorporating one into another, for example, a technology committee we thought maybe could be part of another committee. So when would that discussion occur at this point?
So we'd have to confirm with our bylaws. Our bylaws do state that we have several standing committees, so we have to make sure that we're not doing anything that would interfere with how our bylaws are currently written, for any new committees that we want to have. If there is a non-standing committee that we want to have just for an annual year, that again, would be at the discretion of the board president, and she would entertain any, any interest from members of the board to serve on that committee for that one-year time, again, being a non-standing committee. Standing committees are established by our bylaws.
Right. And, for example, incorporating the technology committee into another committee, so when would we discuss that?
Well, again, being it would be that, I have to confirm if the technology committee is one of the standing committees in our bylaws. If that is the case, then the executive committee of the board would be the most appropriate place to discuss any potential change for our bylaws and present that to the rest of the, rest of the board.
Okay, thank you very much. And we can talk further about that, thank you, Ms. Koen, once we have an executive committee meeting, and we can ask Mr. Bleecker to look further into that for us. Thank you. Our assistant superintendent's report, Dr. Fair.
Yes, good evening, happy new year, everyone. I wanted to, I have a short report this evening, I want to highlight under new business personnel, 17G through L, we are, we're set to run our summer programs from last year, inclusive of our new two initiated programs from 2021, our summer boot camp and camp invention. So on tonight's agenda, you'll see that our extended school year, our booster camp, our summer boot camp, camp invention, summer music program, and safety town programs will all be offered in 2022. So in the coming months, we will work on staffing these programs, and once those people are hired, then we'll obviously be on an upcoming board agenda for your approval. The next piece is, I've been trying my best to avoid COVID-19 information, because I want so desperately to move forward, but I also want to provide the board and the community with as much information as possible. So recently, as we have shared our COVID cases in our weekly email communications to the school community, and as we've been updating our COVID dashboard on our district website, we have obviously recently seen a surge in our COVID cases, which is the trend in surrounding districts in the region. We recognize that the CDC issued a press release with updated guidance on December 27th, and the New Jersey Department of Health is still waiting updated guidance documents from the CDC for specific settings, including schools. According to the New Jersey Department of Health, they will review and/or update New Jersey guidance for schools once the CDC guidance is released. Also, over break, test to stay information was released that will be reviewed with the various logistical considerations that need to take place with regards to our district and the oversight of the monitoring required. And with that said, we've been meeting regularly with our school nurses, and I know that we said this before, I know that we ceremonial, ceremonially applauded their efforts at the end of last year, but particularly in light of our recent surge in cases. I just want to thank our school nurses for working alongside us. We truly do feel like a team, despite the challenges, despite the circumstances, our nurses have really been stepping it up. So we applaud them and we respect them, so they've been a tremendous part here in our district. So I think it's, it's an optimal time, we've been saying it, Dr. Dittoro, Ms. Rizzo, and myself, we've been saying it every chance that we get to them, but I believe that a public, a public praise is really, really warranted right now, so thank you to them. And that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wow, president's report. I know none of you are surprised, but I have a little bit to say.
Should we take a break, versus?
Uh, you know, I've got the time right in front of me, Mr. DeSilva, I'll try to keep it brief. So first off, I would like to thank my fellow board members for placing your confidence and trust in myself, and Mr. Kizmarsky, and Mr. DeSilva, as our executive committee. I feel very humbled and grateful to be given this opportunity, and I look forward to working collaboratively with each and every one of you. I also want to thank all of you for your service to this board, and we greatly appreciate your service in the Mawa community. Although little early on, it does seem that 2022 is going to be another year filled with challenges, maybe a bit of a roller coaster ride, right? But I'm confident that with our vision and priority as a board, we're going to move Mawa forward and place our children first in all we do. I also just like to thank again our administrative team. I think the break was probably not enough for you guys, you needed a few extra days, because you came back with a bang, as they say, right? So, Dr. Dittoro, Dr. Fair, Dr. Bavino, Ms. Rizzo, and Mr. Bleecker, thank you again for all you do. I don't know, we all thought times were settling a bit, but, I don't know, the crazy, it's like the crazy train is back, as they say. Lastly, just to administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, support staff, nurses, parents, and of course, our students in this district, wishing all of you a happy and healthy new year, and let's hope for a successful year collaboratively, and individually for everyone as well. So again, thank you, I could be under two minutes there, Mr. DeSilva.
That's first.
All right. And anyway, I look forward to this year, thank you again very much. Board member remarks and additional comments? Mr. Kizmarsky?
All right, thank you so much. Happy new year, everyone. I don't want anything formally prepared, I just want to take a minute to thank some people. I will start with my family, my wife for putting up with this, myself, and all of the Mawa I bring to my house. You know, she is a saint, and, you know, she does a lot to help support this and what I do for the town. I want to thank my children, who, between my job and my board position, have nowhere to run in this town without knowing that I'm watching them at all times. But I do this for them, and I do this for all of their friends, and all of the kids in this district, and all the families. And on that, I want to thank the voters for re-electing me again and sending me back here. It's an honor to serve on this board, it's an honor to serve with all of you, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to remain on the executive committee. Dr. Morthee, I wish you well, I'm obviously here to support you in any way I can, and I certainly look forward to the coming year. As I said at our board retreat, you know, we talked about our lies, the lie is, is my love of this district and the need and want to protect this district, to ensure our children, our teachers, our administrators have everything they need to make their experience here great, much like I had and Rick had as graduates of the class of '93. And that's important to me. It's important to me that, you know, my children have, and look, the worlds are very different from when I went to school until now, but there is a common thread that this town is amazing, and we have an amazing district, because we always hire amazing people to run it. And so with that, I wish us all good luck and well, and I look forward to this coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kizmarsky, and thank you for your service as past president to this board. Any other board member remarks? Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, and pretty much congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to working with you very closely.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the residents of Mawa who supported my campaign, the campaigns of Mr. Kizmarsky and Trista, obviously. It's a tremendous privilege, but also a responsibility, to serve on this board and to fulfill the mission of our district, which is to, basically to realize the potential of every student. I also want to thank Phil, Rachel, and Terry for throwing their names into the ring, and they ran a great campaign. We had a very sort of open, transparent process, and I'm very thankful that they ran. I'm especially mindful that I also represent not just the people who supported me, and the people who... the people who didn't vote, I, I really represent everyone. As Mr. Beeson often says, "The weight of 27,000 people are on your shoulders." I feel the same weight, and I feel the sense, same sense of responsibility to the people who didn't vote for me as I did for the people who did. It, it's, it's, um, a nonpartisan process for a very good reason, and, um, it, it enables the best ideas to come to the fore. So in addition to the oath that we all took tonight, that Ben and I took tonight, I also pledged to always make the decisions about our district in the best interest of students. Um, when Leslie left us at our last meeting, that was one of the hallmarks of her, uh, career here in the board, is that students were always the deciding point of, uh, or the center of her, the focus of her decision-making. As everyone throughout the campaign said, "Mawa schools are exceptional." This did not happen by accident, or was it a consequence of good fortune? It happens through intentional action, the work of passionate and highly-trained education professionals, the support of parents, our volunteer organizations, and the hard work of our students. We've been tested throughout the pandemic, but the collective we, the, our collective we never wavered from our focus on students. We must acknowledge, however, the real challenges we have before us to regain our forward momentum. But I'm very optimistic that all of the years of planning, training, learning, and investing have endowed our district with exceptional methods and processes to help our students realize their potential. My optimism is not unfounded. I would, I, one of the examples I think of is, we ran woodshop in a remote school environment in a tremendously creative way. It's just one small example of some of the heroic and extraordinary efforts our staff went to, to making remote as productive as possible. Our teachers, school leaders, paraprofessionals, secretaries, bus drivers, maintenance team, and heroic nurses show up every day eager to help fulfill our mission, and we owe each of them a profound sense of gratitude. I want to thank my board colleagues for your support, and I look forward to getting back to work with you and moving our district forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your very thoughtful remarks, Mr. Kizmarsky and Mr. Gallo. Um, anyone else? Mr. DeSilva.
I'm gonna be real quick. I hate tall one mic.
The orator is your father.
Yeah. So, uh, a quick thank you to the rest of the board for, uh, your support and allowing me to stay on the executive work for another year. Look forward to, uh, another collaborative and, and productive year on our, uh, on our board. And I want to echo something that Dr. Fair said, um, talking about the nurses. I was not at the last meeting because two of my three, uh, tested positive, so I was precautionarily, uh, quarantining. And I got to see firsthand for the first time the process of, uh, contact tracing and, and, and everything else. And Ms. Kakaluski was fantastic, as she always is, but knowing the number of people that she has to go through that same process for, I mean, she's got to be pulling her hair out. It's, it's, it's a huge undertaking, it's a, it's a lot of work, um, and our nurses have really done a, an unbelievable, unbelievable job. So definitely special thank you to, uh, to that staff.
Have a round of applause for our nurses.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeSilva. Um, all right, we have, I guess, no old business?
Yeah, the minutes from last meeting, uh, we have to next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Denise.
Are we doing board committee reports?
No. There are no board committees.
We have no, I think, committees at this point, until they are established at the next, uh, meeting. But if there are any remarks, Mr. Denise, you have the floor if you'd like to say anything, but not for committee-related business.
Okay, I was gonna do the, uh, committee report for the first reading of the policies and regulations that are on tonight's agenda, but I guess that's not, uh...
Mr. Bleeker, is that? How do we work that?
If, if there wasn't any committees, uh, the committees are established through, uh, the end of the school year. So if, uh, something was done, um, since our last, uh, board meeting on December 22nd, and you have an update from then, uh, I think that that can definitely be...
Okay, and we will add, uh, any, uh, board committee reports that Mr. Denise would like to, Mr. Denise, who would like to turn the page?
I won't make a brief.
All right.
Okay, the policy committee has four policies and regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading. The first one is policy regulation 5751, sexual harassment of students. The United States Department of Education recently published a final rule amending the title, the federal Title IX regulations regarding sexual harassment of students by school employees, other students, or third parties. The new federal regulations revised the definition of sexual harassment and include a detailed procedure on how public school districts must respond to allegations of sexual harassment. The final rule defines sexual harassment requires the school district to designate a Title IX coordinator, outlines notice requirements, and establishes reporting, investigation, hearing, and appeal process requirements. This is a major change to the existing policy with very detailed procedures in the regulations. Special positions were created on tonight's agenda to meet these mandated requirements, and they could be found on 16G. Uh, the second one is policy and regulation 5850, social events and class trips. This is a new policy and regulation to our district that requires students who participate in approved social events and class trips are subject to district rules for student conduct and must submit to the authority of assigned chaperones. Infractions of the rules will be subject to discipline in the same manner as are infractions of rules during a regular school program. The third one is policy and regulations 7510, use of school facilities has been revised and included sentence on games of chance as it pertains to holding tricky trades and 50/50s on school premises. And the last one is policy and regulation 9700, special interest groups has been revised to establish groups considered special, special interest groups as defined in the policy.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, so now we can go on to new business.
Old business.
Old, well, they're, according to Mr. Bleeker, there's...
Old business is listed there, however, the, uh, the minutes from the last meeting have not been prepared yet for the board to review. Uh, that will be done for the, uh, next board meeting.
Thank you for clarification. Um, so let's move on to new business, and let's take new business A through G. Any questions, comments? Okay. A motion, Mr. Kizmarsky, thank you, seconded by Mr. DeSilva. Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call new business 16A through G. Mr. Copley.
Yes, at all, but I'm abstaining on check number 105257.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, on all except in 16A, I'm abstaining on check 105252.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes. All right, let's now take new business personnel, A through, uh, L, is that correct? Yes. Um, and I also just, uh, want to say very exciting to see our summer programming, um, coming again this year, and that we're already thinking ahead six months in. So thank you again, administrative team, for being well ahead of that. Only question I have for that is, um, are, have we decided if some will still be at no cost to students, or is that still being determined about cost?
We're, we're still deciding on the, the details for each of the programs.
Okay, great, thank you. Do I have a motion for that, or any other questions, comments, motion? Uh, Mr. Gallo, and seconded by Ms. Sico.
Okay, roll call for 17A through L. Mr. Copley.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes. Thank you very much. We move on to public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please state your name and provide your address. Note, this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Just gonna make you wait there, Mr. Butel.
Hi there.
Mr. Butel, how are you?
Good, good. Happy new year.
Oh, we have a motion. Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. We need, I need a motion to open to the public. Yes, I missed that.
This is a filibuster.
Turn the page. Mr. Kizmarsky, seconded by Mr. DeSilva.
Ready?
We're ready now.
If anyone has anything else to say.
Law is yours.
Andy Butel, president of the Mawa Education Association. Uh, happy new year, everybody. Uh, on behalf of the members of the MEA, I want to congratulate Mr. Kizmarsky and Mr. Gallo on your reelection to the board. Uh, also, uh, Ms. D'Amirro, even though she's not here, on her election, and Dr. Morthee, uh, on becoming president. Uh, the MEA leadership is obviously quite proud of the collegial relationship we built with the board, and I think that relationship's more important now than ever. Um, we're obviously at a difficult moment in a difficult year. Uh, as Dr. Fair was referencing, we're seeing a surge in, in COVID cases, which has led to more staff and students having to be remote, and of course, this morning's weather, uh, was the last thing anybody needed. You know, despite the difficulties of this year, uh, I'm proud that our staff has, has risen to the challenge. Our teachers have adapted instruction to mitigate, uh, learning loss of students. Our counselors have addressed unprecedented social emotional needs of our students. Our secretaries have handled the many logistical challenges of, uh, substitute teacher shortages. Um, and I'd like to echo what many of you said about our nurses, uh, they've done a tremendous job keeping us all safe. Um, the group of them together put in 106 hours of co- time contact tracing over their holiday break, um, all just to keep the community informed and safe. So with that, I would ask, as we enter 2022, um, we'll continue to be the professionals that you've come to expect of us. Um, we'll continue to be there for our students, and I would just ask that, uh, you keep the staff at the forefront of your decision-making and continue to pro- uh, provide the support for us, and we look forward to continuing to work together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butel. All right, do we have any other comments, questions? All right, uh, let's move to, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, seconded by Mr. Copley. Um, and now I need a motion to recess to the executive session. Moved by Mr. Kizmarsky, second, Mr. DeSilva, thank you very much. We will not be, go ahead. We will not be returning after our executive session. Uh, we will be adjourning the meeting from there itself, correct? All right, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Fenders, you may, uh, end the Zoom meeting for those participating. Thank you. Board members, we have to come back and...